All right, welcome to the November 24th, 2020 regular meeting. Madam Clerk, roll call please.
The record will reflect that Councilmember Duffield is currently absent.
All right, Mr. Harp, I will advise that we have no closed session report. Do we have a closed session report?
Thank you, Mayor O'Neil, there's no closed session report.
Thank you. All right, at this point, please stand for the invocation, which I'll lead, and then the pledge of allegiance led by Councilmember Hurdman.
This is a Thanksgiving prayer that my family has used. Thank you, Father, for having created us and given us to each other in the human family. Thank you for being with us in all our joys and sorrows, for your comfort in our sadness, your companionship in our loneliness. Thank you for yesterday, today, tomorrow, and for the whole of our lives. Thank you for friends, for health, and for grace. May we live this and every day conscious of all that has been given to us. Amen.
Please join me in saluting our flag. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Madam Clerk.
The City Council of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are generally limited to three minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are encouraged as well. The City Council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items.
All right, at this time, we'll have City Council announcements and oral reports from City Council on committee activities. This is also the time to ask for new items under Council Policy A1. We'll start my left, right, Mr. Hurdman.
The only thing I have is an A1. To... I'd like the Council to take a look at converting the Tidelines Water Quality Committee to a reinstated EQAC organization or committee with expanded responsibilities to include all things environmental.
All right, thank you. Ms. Dixon.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. A couple of announcements. Just a reminder, we changed the date of the Aviation Committee. It will now be meeting Monday, December 7th, I think at 5:00 PM, a Zoom meeting. Also want to report on a couple of activities. So I had my District 1 Town Hall last week, and thanks to staff for their support, primarily focused on enforcement issues related to the boardwalk. And staff updated on the PD, what they're going to be doing, and as well as Public Works. Also, we have a fun project out of District 1, and that is the naming of the new fire station. And because it's no longer located specifically in Lido Village, these are villages designated in our general plan, it's now going to be in Canary Village. Canary, Cannery, Cannery Village. So there's a number of suggestions were elicited by the 50 or so members who, residents who participated in the town hall. So I believe John Pope will be doing a Survey Monkey kind of program, just to push out and get some reaction from people, what should we name our fire station. Also, I want to just update on what's going on in the peninsula. I was driving down Bell Bowl Boulevard, I think I have a picture to support this, and our utilities department was having a major project. There are a lot going on in the peninsula in terms of infrastructure and water repair. And so just happened to be watching our terrific utilities department staff replacing two large 16-inch water valves that were no longer working properly. And it was impressive to see our utility staff in action with such a complex project, and impressive to see our underground water system and the behind-the-scenes efforts to maintain and repair our water and sewer systems. So I just want to thank our utilities team and Public Works for their great work. There's a lot of water main and water main valve repair work going on on the peninsula. Some is planned, some are not planned, there are repair, emergency repair, but it's really terrific to see all our investment in our infrastructure. And I appreciate the work of our Public Works staff and utility staff. So thank you. And I think that is it. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Muldoon.
Yes, thank you for an A1 item. First, I'd like to start off by saying that it's been a very tough year for many of us. Many are saddened here about the Christmas Boat Parade being canceled. I have here over 250 emails of those who have said that they want the Boat Parade to continue. It's a 112-year-old tradition. It's very important, I think, for many people, that memories of the event, and they look forward to it at the end of the year. It's a light during a dark time. So I'm going to ask staff to put on place a future agenda for Council to discuss a safe and responsible way to assist in the continuance of the Boat Parade this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Brenner.
Yes, let's see, I think we have a slide for, out of my last town hall meeting where we had about 90 people on the call, and we were talking about various things about traffic management in Corona Del Mar and the possibility of one-way streets, the possibility of paid parking, a variety of things. We have put together, John Pope from our Public Affairs Department and our CDMRA and the Chamber have come up with a survey that we have online, where we're asking the people in Corona Del Mar and the surrounding area to answer some questions for us and tell us how they feel about different solutions to problems. So a postcard was sent out to all the CDM area, to property owners, but other people can go onto our website at newportbeachca.gov/cdmsurvey and answer these questions. And I am asking specifically for me because I want to know what the people in my district really want me to pursue as far as solutions to these problems. One of the things that came out of our town hall meeting was us emphasizing to the police department how frustrated we are with the loud vehicles that are in our community. And we've seen a lot of the signs that the police department has put up saying that loud vehicles will be cited. And our next slide is from Officer Pissoros sent me an email with this picture, and he said, "We had another busy weekend. Motor officers wrote numerous citations for loud exhaust, and we towed all three of these vehicles in the picture for street racing." Over $1 million worth in vehicles in the picture, Lamborghini, Porsche, and Mercedes AMG. All three vehicles were impounded for 30 days. We also were at all of the car shows, warning people about the loud exhaust. And I just, I'm very pleased to report that because I think our citizens spoke loudly and clearly about how important that was to them, and our police department really took it seriously. So that was wonderful to hear. And then the Corona Del Mar Christmas Walk is normally the first Sunday in December, and our CDM bid and our CDM Chamber are taking the COVID situation very seriously, and they obviously could not hold that one-day event where the sidewalks are mobbed and everyone is in close proximity. So what they have done instead is they have done a month-long program where they are having storefront decorations, they're having special lighting, they're having a holiday lighting and decor contest. And if you go to the cdmchamber.com, you will see all the different merchants that have different promotions that they're putting on. So they're really encouraging people to get down into the village on a scattered basis throughout the month, and they're having pop-up events and things, but not publicizing a date and time so that people don't show up all at one time. So that's going to be a lot of fun in the village. And in addition to that, our next slide is that the CDM Residents Association is also having a contest, and they're calling it Light Up Corona Del Mar. And I think that's our next slide, or maybe the other one. But anyway, so they're having a contest where they're giving prizes, and they will be judging. I think the deadline on that is December the 12th, but if you go to cdmra.org, you can get information about that. So, and that was another sort of COVID-sensitive activity, thinking that by lighting up the homes in the village and in the surrounding area, that people can get in their cars and drive around and see the Christmas lights, and it's a safe and sane activity for people. So everybody's really jumping on board and sort of reimagining their events for this year.
Thank you. Mr. Avery.
Yeah, I've got a couple of great gift-giving ideas for folks that want to contribute civically. And the first one is the Newport Beach Public Library Foundation's holiday fundraising campaign. And this year, they're stressing through the CARES Act, giving has never gotten more rewarding in terms of tax breaks. So that shouldn't be your main reason for giving, of course, but it's always a good incentive. So there are new giving opportunities for non-itemizers, unlimited deduction for cash gifts, and relief from minimum distribution requirements for IRAs, and IRA-qualified charitable distributions can still be made. So there's also increased giving opportunities for corporations. So this is over and above what has previously been allowed from last year. So it's worth looking into, and this all goes to our wonderful Newport Beach Public Library Foundation, which is a partner of the library and of the city, and funds a huge amount of books and materials for the library. So a very good cause and a great way to give back this time of year to our city and the library, which is, I think, the best library anywhere in the country. And then we have also, we get from time to time, and I think a lot more people wonder about this, but if you are compelled to reach out this time of the year and help those who are experiencing homelessness, you can do so through the city. And that would be on the city's website of newportbeachca.gov/give, G-I-V-E. And if you don't write this down, you can always contact the city and get that information, or go online, and you can find it at the city's website. But it's the time of year where it's cold out and we have people in need in our community. And so, again, helping the homeless, and they can find out that way through newportbeachca.gov/give. And I also wanted to discuss, when the next slide comes up, as those who follow the city are well aware, the general plan update is, the first stages are underway, and it's happening, and we have a lot of people who often ask, "How did this get to be like this?" And the time to ask that is ahead of time, and that is, you're allowed to do that, and you can do that through participating in the general plan update and through these workshops that are being offered by our incredibly talented staff and by community volunteers who have a lot of knowledge in these subjects. And so I attended the Housing Suitability Virtual Workshop Part II, and I also attended the Circulation Element Workshop, and that involves traffic circulation around what we're seeing currently. And then, obviously, with the development that's going to be happening in Newport Beach over the next 20 years and ongoing, these are critically important things for the city to have input from residents on. And I was really, really impressed by these workshops, the staff explaining these things. And to me, they were really interesting, both of them, and I learned a lot. And the only thing that was really disappointing was the lack of participation. And I don't, I think we need to do more as a city to get the word out, because an awful lot of effort goes into it. And our planning department and community development department, just incredible staff and some community experts, and then the residents who do participate have, they add greatly to these workshops. But we're only getting about 15 to 25 community members, and we really should have 100. We should have many more people participating because this is going together, and this is the time for the community to participate in the future of this town. So it's incredibly important because these workshops give you a lot of information and make you a much better contributor to the future of the city, learning about the constraints we have on these issues and also the possibilities for really making our circulation, our housing of the future, much better. And so, on the screen are dates coming up in December and in January for the Planning Commission briefing, Circulation Element Themes Workshop, and again, another Circulation Element Themes Workshop, December 16, Planning Commission meeting, and Circulation Vision Workshop and Planning Commission. So obviously, attending all of these would be great, but just dipping into some of them, particularly the workshops, I think, are really well worth it, and I encourage everyone to participate in this, because it doesn't come around that often where citizens have a real opportunity to put input into the future of the city in this incredible process called the general plan update. And finally, I'd like to just say that my mentee, the mayor and I are mentors at Newport High School, mentoring juniors, and Bruce Bennett's here tonight from Newport Harbor, and he's doing a job shadow. I think Bruce is in the community room, freezing, and he's got, he's been reading up on the agenda and on all the staff reports. And so he's got to now write a report on the job shadow of my part-time job here as a City Councilperson. And that's the end of my report. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll be pretty quick. I represented the city at the City Selection Committee and the ACCOC Annual Meeting, where we were selecting regional representatives on a variety of governmental boards. We had a TCA Board Meeting. Probably the highlight from that was we confirmed the CEO's contract, Samuel Johnson, who is doing a heck of a job over at TCA right now. Joy and I attended the Corona Del Mar Residents Association Meeting to provide updates for the City Council. Earlier today and all throughout the day, we had a very full blood drive across the way in the community room, co-hosted between supervisor, Chair of the Supervisors, Michelle Steele, and City of Newport Beach. This weekend, we'll be celebrating the 75th anniversary of Sugar and Spice on the island. 75 years. We'll be, we'll make sure they get a proclamation, although I will say, they asked for a proclamation. Don't worry, Grace, it's already happened. They asked for a proclamation that declared them to be the original frozen banana stand. We did not weigh into that, so, anyway, but we'll make sure they get it. And then on December 8th, we're finally seeing the groundbreaking for the station to be named later. So I, by the way, really like the Cannery Station, but I'll make sure I vote. All right, yep. So with that, we'll move into matters which council members have asked to be placed on a future agenda. The... Sorry, is this up on the screen right now? Sure, we'll put that up on the screen. Nope, not that. That comes later. No, that's okay. Basically, our city facilities are closed on Thanksgiving. Oh, there you go. And Friday. All right, Thursday and Friday. Okay. So matters which council members have asked to be placed on a future agenda, there's only one. The first is consideration of installing disabled transfer lifts at Marina Park. If you'd like to see that brought back, please raise your hand.
At 6:00, unanimous?
All right. Now we'll move into public comments. Madam Clerk.
This is the time in which council members may pull items from the consent calendar for discussion. Those are items 1 through 15. Public comments are also invited on consent calendar items. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record. If any item is removed from the consent calendar by a council member, members of the public are invited to speak on each item for up to three minutes per item. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. Council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the City Council votes on the motion unless members of the City Council request specific items to be discussed and are removed from the consent calendar for separate action.
All right, Council, do you have any items to pull, lodge a, or lodge a no vote on? I'll start from my left, Mr. Hurdman.
None.
Ms. Dixon.
I have none.
Mr. Muldoon.
I have none, but for the record, I'd like to state that item number seven, my conflict for undergrounding and interest related to wireless has long since lapsed. I went well over the year just to be safe, so I have no more conflicts on these items. I'm just going to put on exciting stuff like undergrounding and the new, the name of the, hopefully, mixed station, that's what I'm going for, the fire station naming. Thank you.
All right. And then, Ms. Brenner.
No.
Mr. Avery.
I have none.
I have none either. Do we have a motion, Mr. Avery?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I move to balance the consent calendar items, 1 through 15, with the exception of no items pulled. And we also have an amendment on item 1, the minutes.
All right, do we have a second? Second by Mr. Muldoon. At this time, we'll go to public comment. We'll start in the community room.
Thank you, Mayor O'Neil, members of the City Council. My name is Jim Mosher. Most of the 15 items that are on the consent calendar tonight look pretty routine. One of them that's unusual is item 14, which is an update and recommendation to make some revisions to the community program grants and special event grants that were approved back in June. It's unusual this year because through no fault of the grantees, some of the events that were expected to happen last year did not happen, and some that were granted money in this coming year did not happen. So this item perhaps needs a little clarification. The most confusing portion of it is the recommendation to grant an additional $10,000 to the Newport Ocean Sealing Association that puts on the Newport Ensenada Race, which did not happen this spring, so the previous grant was not used. And the staff report recommended allocating that to the current year, but then it also seems to be recommending awarding a new $10,000. So I think there needs to be some clarification. If you approve this as recommended, are you awarding a single $10,000 or are you combining this with the unused $10,000 from the spring? And more generally, how are the unused grants being dealt with? Is that up to the city staff, or is the council having to make that decision? Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. All right, seeing none, do we have any calls? All right, how many? Hi, go ahead.
Yes, good evening, Mayor O'Neil and members of City Council, and most specifically, Councilwoman Jeff Hurdman. This is Arlene Greer, and I'm vice chair of the City Arts Commission and a community member. I'm calling in this evening because I would like to express my grateful support while chairing the City Arts Commission in the past years of Councilwoman Hurdman and his help with programming on the City Arts Commission.
So, Arlene...
I'm speaking for myself this evening.
Sorry, Arlene.
And it has been a pleasure to have...
Arlene, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yep. So that's going to be the next item.
Oh, okay, shall I come back?
Yes, please. Yeah, if you wouldn't mind just calling back in. Give us a couple of minutes, but I appreciate that. I want to make sure you get through the whole item on the, at the appropriate time.
Okay, that's fine.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Arlene.
I'll call back.
Thank you very much. We're the next caller.
There may be several like that.
Hi, we're on consent calendar, public comment. Go ahead.
Yes, my name is David Tanner, Mr. Chairman, members of the City Council. I'd like to express my sincere appreciation and that of my fellow residents to Councilman Hurdman. Jeff, thank you for the years of dedication you have spent serving the people of Newport Beach. You are and will remain a unique asset to our community. Now that you've spent multiple terms on the City Council and learned the inner workings of the city and government agencies with which the city interacts with, my fellow residents, and I hope you will choose to step up the ladder, to find better ways to serve the people of Newport Beach. On behalf of myself and fellow residents, thank you for your contributions with their help shape Newport Beach into the tool it is today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tanner. All right, do we have any others? Okay. Hi, go ahead.
Hi, this is Niasse Barfield. I want to thank you, Jeff, for all your dedication and time spent on the Newport Beach City Council. I know this is a full-time job and sometimes not very rewarding. My husband and I appreciate all of what you have accomplished throughout your tenure. You are my, what my husband George calls a consummate professional. After years of public service with the school system and the involvement with the city, you are due to reap the benefits of your hard work and move into enjoying life. Thank you again so much, Nancy and George Barfield.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor O'Neil and members of City Council, and most specifically, Councilman Jeff Hurdman. This is Arlene Greer, your friend and also vice chair of the City Arts Commission, and I'm a community member. I'm ever so grateful for your support of me while chairing the City Arts Commission in these past years. And speaking for myself, it has been a pleasure to have you and Sally join me, Phil, colleagues, friends, and family for the summer concert series on the Green every year. Moreover, I greatly appreciate your support every year during the annual Newport Beach Art Exhibition here in the community. Your presence there was absolutely wonderful. Most significantly and unforgettable is, of course, your support to help secure the $500,000 Data California Grant for the sculpture exhibition Phase 5 and 6 at the City Civic Center. Thank you ever so much, Councilman Hurdman, for making a difference and providing a fantastic art experience for so many children and art lovers here in the city of Newport Beach and afar. I am looking very much forward to our continued warm friendship over the years and enjoyment of the arts and so much more here in the city of Newport Beach in the days ahead with you and Sally. Thank you, and all the best to you and Sally for a safe and happy Thanksgiving holiday. God bless and Godspeed. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, go ahead.
Yes, this is Karen Carlson, and I'm a longtime member, resident of Corona Del Mar, and I just wanted to thank Councilman Hurdman for his service. And we've heard and will hear a lot about Bell Bowl Island and the Airport Committee, where he spent countless hours, but I would like to go back when I first met him. He was not even a councilman yet, but was starting to investigate and help us and support the Corona Del Mar Library Project. And I feel that it was his help and support that really got it off the ground with Councilman Brenner. It has come to fruition, and it is such a wonderful compliment to our community, and so appreciate everything that he did. And I hope that his expertise and all of the knowledge that he has learned, being a councilman, he'll be able to use in other ways to benefit our community. He's a real asset and a treasure. Thank you for your service.
Thank you. We have any other calls? Okay. If you're in the room, I promise, I'm going to, I'll make sure you have the opportunity to speak. All right, we'll bring this back up. Um, all right, we'll bring this back up, um, and, uh, this time we have a motion and a second. Uh, seeing no discussion, let's go ahead and vote.
With Councilmember Duffield absent, the motion carries six-zero.
Well, the appreciation knows no procedure, so, um, I, uh, at this time, I want to make sure that I'm going to take a, uh, you know, point of privilege as the, as mayor to bifurcate this next item, which is the public comments on non-agenda items, into two sections. The first is to, um, to show appreciation for, uh, Councilmember Hurdman, uh, who's attending his last meeting here tonight. And I know that there are folks, because they've already spoken, um, who would like to recognize your service, and I know that there are folks in the community room as well as in the, in this room as well who would like to do the same. Um, for this, I'm going to start actually by kicking this over to, uh, Joy Brenner.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Um, Jeff, I hadn't intended to get teary quite this early, so, um, I, I was going to be very composed, but to start with, we'd like to show a video from Assemblywoman Cottie Petrie-Norris's office.
Good evening, City Council members and Newport Beach residents. This is Assemblywoman Cottie Petrie-Norris. This evening, I want to take just a moment to say thank you to Councilmember Jeff Hurdman for his years of service and commitment to the city of Newport Beach. Councilmember Hurdman, you are a consummate public servant, working tirelessly to advocate for the people and the community you represent. It has been such a pleasure to work with you and to get to know you over the past two years. You've made an indelible impact on the city of Newport Beach and on the entire county. My team and I are looking forward to your next chapter, and I know that you will continue to serve the city and the people of Newport Beach. Thank you. And to everyone watching at home, happy holidays and enjoy a blessed and very happy Thanksgiving.
Okay. Um, I know we have a call coming in from the Corona Del Mar Residents Association. I don't know if Karen Trangali is on the line or if you know, that's probably Karen. Could we try that?
Hi, go ahead.
Hi, uh, this is Mayor O'Neil. This is Karen Trangali from, um, Corona Del Mar. Uh, council members, as past president of Corona Del Mar's Residents Association, I've been asked on behalf of CBMRA, and it certainly is my privilege to acknowledge Councilmember Jeff Hurdman's legacy of public service. I've personally known Jeff for quite a while, uh, quite a number of years, actually, and have had an opportunity to work with him on a number of quality of life issues in Corona Del Mar and citywide, even before he was elected to City Council. So I was happy to be asked to represent CB, CBMRA this evening. And what I'd like to do right now is read into the record a letter, um, that was authored by our current president, Debbie Stevens, and it's for Councilman Hurdman. Um, Councilman Hurdman, the Corona Del Mar Residents Association wants to thank you for your decades of service to the city of Newport Beach, including the last four years as council member and for supporting CBMRA. 2020 was called the year of the volunteer, and nobody volunteers more time than our city council members, especially this year. We realize that this was a very difficult year to be a councilperson, that difficult decisions needed to be made, and that the residents had very different opinions about what those decisions should be. We appreciate your patience and attention to listening to our residents when making these difficult decisions. We appreciate your support and input on the many committees that you participated in, especially the Aviation Committee and the Water Quality Coastal Tidestands Committee. Your work as chair on the Aviation Committee has resulted in more restrictions on John Wayne Airport that will benefit our community for many years to come. We appreciate your support of the residents of Corona Del Mar and the CBMRA these last four years, through your attendance at our regular monthly meetings, our annual meetings, and through support of your idea, of our ideas and areas of concern, especially things like short-term lodging. You will certainly be missed. Sincerely, Debbie Stevens, on behalf of the CBRA Board members. Thank you.
Mayor, if you'd like to go to other comments and telephone calls, and then I'll wrap it up.
Perfect. So what we're going to do is we're going to start with the, um, community room. Uh, we'll come to the phones and then we'll finish with any comments that people would like to make who are in the room here. Yep, don't worry, we'll get there. All right, we're going to start with the community room.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and, um, council members. My name is Nancy Scarborough. I'd like to publicly acknowledge my appreciation for the hard work and dedication of Councilmember Jeff Hurdman over the past forty years. Jeff, thank you for working tirelessly and thanklessly on the airport issues as well as spending countless hours every week on so many other issues, committee, um, committees, city projects, and events. Thank you for taking my calls. Thank you for answering my emails. I appreciate your thoughtful consideration of the issues, your willingness to discuss projects with an open mind and consider all sides of the matter. Thank you for representing us in such, with such dignity and integrity. We still need you to be an active member of our community, and I suspect that the residents will not let you slip off to retire, retire quite as easily as you would have imagined. I know I will be calling you for advice and opinions regularly. Thank you for your service. Newport Beach is a better place because of you. Thank you.
Thank you. We're the next speaker, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, I would like to thank Jeff Hurdman for four years of really hard work and great service to the city. I know it's been anything but a part-time job for you. Uh, Jeff, I first met you at the Government Affairs Committee meetings hosted by the Newport Beach Chamber of Commerce, and, uh, those were very helpful to me because you imparted a lot of information about issues, um, facing the city. And I want to thank you for including me on your many, many blogs over the last, I don't know how long, long time. Again, uh, giving a lot of valuable information about issues, explaining the technicalities of the airport issues, which are not easy to understand or explain. Your explanation was probably more, well, definitely was more meticulous and, yeah, helpful than anything else I've seen. Um, there was a nice, uh, shout-out to you today in Stew News by Amy Sink, a regular, uh, writer for Stew News. And, um, Jeff, whatever you do next, the best of luck, and we'll see you around town. Thank you.
Thank you. We're the next speaker, please.
Good day, members of the City Council. My name is Charles Claude. I'm here today to offer my thanks to Councilmember Jeff Hurdman for his years of service to the city of Newport Beach. Jeff served on the original Tidestands Management Committee and was a member of the Civil Service Board prior to running for City Council. As a council member, Jeff has lent a willing ear and offered a thoughtful and informed opinion. I have not always agreed with his votes, but there can be no doubt he had the best interest of the citizens when he voted. I believe that Jeff devoted over forty hours per week to this city as our councilperson. I hope his successor can do the same. I know I speak for many residents when I say, "Thank you, Jeff Hurdman." I hope you continue to stay active in city affairs. Your institutional knowledge is invaluable to the residents of Newport Beach. Thank you again for your service.
Thank you. We're the next, uh, next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name is Sue Dvorak, and I'm here tonight to thank Councilman Jeff Hurdman for his service to the community of Newport Beach and especially for the countless hours you've devoted to the airport issues which negatively impact daily lives of thousands of residents. From your participation in Congressman Ruda's Aviation Task Force to wrangling the city's Aviation Committee into a body that is actually doing meaningful work and producing tangible results, to fielding a vast legion of emails and phone calls from residents, your dedication and work ethic has been greatly appreciated. In addition, I have appreciated your humor and frankness. Um, well, usually I've appreciated your frankness, um, but most of all, I have appreciated the fact that you have approached your duties on City Council with integrity, honesty, and independence. You've shown a dedication to residents rather than to your own political aspirations or an adherence to a specific ideology. I look forward to working, to continuing to work with you in the future on community issues and to always ensure that our airline neighbors use the NADP-1 departure procedure. Thank you so much, Jeff.
Thank you. We're the next speaker, please.
Good evening, Mayor and City Councilman. I think I'm going to bring a little bit different perspective to this. Um, as I think Will and Kevin would agree, um, when you're representing somebody, be it a political conflict or legal conflict, you really get to see who that person is. Uh, I've been fortunate over the years to represent people from Ed Royce and Senator John Lewis to supervisor, now Senator Pat Bates, um, the Newport Aquatic Club, et cetera, et cetera. And in each of these representations, what comes out from these people is their commitment to their community, their morality, their decency, and their ethics. And I could say without any hesitation that Jeff Hurdman is now one of those guys. Over the past four years, I've had the honor to work with Jeff on a number of legal and political issues, ranging from the intently political to the intensely personal. And in each situation, Jeff has been the same, a man of integrity and ethics, someone who truly does care about our community and about what is good for the community, whether or not that position benefits him politically. I have seen Jeff with his family, the lovely, trendy, and super hip Sally, their blended children and their grandchildren, who truly form, as they should, the center of his universe. He is blessed to have such a strong family, and more importantly, he knows and appreciates it. Jeff has set the groundwork for, uh, the next generation of negotiations with regard to the airport, has given insight into what we should do with Balboa Island, and has fought hard to maintain the quality of life we have here in Newport Beach. And as you know, anybody who supports, uh, the arts and Arlene's passion for the arts gets a number of bonus points with me. Um, Newport Beach is a better place as a result of the work done by Jeff. Jeff, thank you for your hard work. Thank you for your commitment, and most importantly, thank you for allowing me to be your friend.
Thank you. We're the next speaker, please. All right, how are we doing on calls? Okay. Let's go with calls first. Hi, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Christine, and I'm a resident of Newport Coast. Um, I want to publicly, um, call to thank Councilman Hurdman for his amazing service to the city and the citizens of Newport Beach. You truly were a voice for the citizens, the people who live here day in and day out, the people who needed their voices to be heard on many tough issues that have come before council. I've spent many Tuesdays watching council meetings, often with my family here at home like tonight, and you have stood your ground on so many issues and spoke with a passion that has not gone unnoticed. I also want to thank your wonderful wife and family, because every person who holds office, I'm sure can attest that they can't do it alone without the support of family and friends. So I just want to thank you for making yourself available to us, the people, and for your unwavering love for our beautiful city. God bless you in your next chapter. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We'll go to the next call.
That have come before council.
Hi, so make sure you mute what you're listening to and then you can go ahead.
Watching house, bathroom, downstairs, like tonight, and you have stood your ground on so many issues-
Hi, sir. If you can hear me, just go ahead and mute what you're listening to and then go ahead.
Like, and, because every person who holds office-
Hi, if you're still there, go ahead.
Hello, this is Nancy Alston, and I'd like to thank Councilman Hurdman for his service to the community. And of course, since I am a member of the Aviation Committee, I'd like to especially point out how much I appreciate the fact that he took a, took a committee that, on its best day, was unorganized. And he shaped it up, and we are the better for it. And in fact, just yesterday, I attended a meeting of one of our subcommittees that is working hard to improve, uh, the situation for the residents in regards to John Wayne. So thank you, Councilman Hurdman, for all the things you have done on several committees, uh, including short-term rentals and many others, and I hope you stay involved in city life. And I thank you for all of your service.
Thank you. We're the next caller. Hi, go ahead.
Hi, um, this is Corley Newman. Um, I'm a thirty-five-year resident and business owner here in Newport Beach, and I'm calling to thank Councilman Jeff Hurdman for his four years of public service. I kind of come at this from a different perspective because I am an, um, applicant's rep as well as a resident. And when I first met Jeff, he, he met me with open arms, with graciousness, with integrity, and has always been extremely responsive in terms of returning emails and phone calls and willingness to talk through the issues. We haven't always agreed on everything, um, but I've always had tremendous respect for Jeff, no matter which side we ended up on, and I want to thank him in this season, a week of gratitude, um, for his years of service. And like everyone else before me, I hope he sticks around and, and continues to service community. Thank you very much, Councilman Hurdman.
Thank you. Any other calls? All right, so we're going to come back in the room. I know we had, if you'd like to speak, you can go ahead now. Oh, sorry, if you want to come up, come on up, so we're, that's okay. We're recording it, so we want, I want to make sure. Yep, come on up to the microphone there.
Bobby McGregor, morning, Rick.
Uh, the microphone right there. Perfect.
All right, my name is Tony Sad McGregor, and, um, thank you guys for your support. I went to Kaiser, Enson, Woodland, Harbor, and I was born right there across the bay. Thank you guys. I love and appreciate you. McGregor out.
All right, thank you. All right, do we have any other comments at this time? All right, we'll bring it back up. Joy, go ahead.
Um, I think Diane, if anybody else wanted to say anything, and then I'll finish up.
Okay.
Well, my seat made up here. I wasn't expecting to be doing this on today's meeting and, or anytime this year, so it's with gratitude. Cora just said that, and this week of Thanksgiving, we have so much to be thankful for in our city, but I'm grateful to have served with you, Jeff. And, and I met you when I was considering running for City Council several years ago, and you were head of the Balboa Island Improvement Association and very much involved for years with Balboa Island, and you've taught me a lot about Balboa Island and the importance of its history and its culture and what makes it special, and I learned that from you. And, uh, it's indelibly, uh, in my mind of how we protect our local community. Um, just one little anecdotal story, when I was mayor and the mayor makes appointments to committees, and, uh, I suggested that Jeff become chair of our Aviation Committee. He says, "Oh, no, do I want to be chair of the Aviation Committee?" And I said, "You have an opportunity. We as a city have an opportunity as some issues in the general aviation and just generally John Wayne issues are paramount in our thinking." I said, "Jeff, you, you have an opportunity to really make a mark for our community in the leadership of this very important community committee, and you can really make it into something that it's currently not." And it wasn't about four years ago, it, it, as someone said, it was highly disorganized. Or I don't know if it was disorganized as much as it lacked, uh, defined purposes in terms of our strategic goals. So you've taken that committee. It's been, uh, organized around specific functional issues. We did the General Aviation Improvement Program. We have the ongoing FAA. We, you and I and Councilmember Muldoon took trips to Washington, DC to meet with the FAA. You have put your heart and soul not only in- You have put your heart and soul not only into aviation-related issues, but to the city of Newport Beach. And I will miss you. I've been, it's been an honor to serve with you. And I know we'll see you around, and maybe you'll be standing over there at the lectern and giving us some good advice. I hope so. So, best wishes to your cheerleading group over there, Sally and your family. Always looked, enjoyed looking out into the audience when we had people here regularly before COVID, to see Sally and your family always supporting you. You have a beautiful family, and you're a great person, and I wish you great this next chapter, whatever you do. We are all better for it, and I know you will continue to make a difference in your life. So, thank you so much, Jeff. Thank you.
Mr. Muldoon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've never seen that many people call in favor of someone. I've seen people call against someone, but I've never seen that people call in favor of someone, which is a nice honor for them to give you. You know, when you're elected to City Council, it's the honor of a lifetime, and although no one really uses it, you can say you're honorable for your entire life. So, I expect your stationarity is still going to say the Honorable Jeff Herdman, retirement. And if you've seen how people are treated when they're off the City Council, they're often treated even better. So, you can be an arranged, arranged spooner from here going forward and still have the opportunity to be heavily involved in the community, and I look forward to seeing you out there with more respect than ever. Thank you.
Mr. Avery.
Yes, Jeff. I just want to thank you for your friendship during this time on council together, and, you know, and also just socially when we'd be at events, and Julie and I always enjoyed seeing you and Sally. And you always made us feel comfortable and, and, you know, accepted, because some of these events can be kind of, you know, awkward, especially when you're a new council person. So, that's very special to me, and also, you know, the council's a body, and we all have different opinions, and we, and it's interesting how we come together, and you are a big part of that. And it's been something to just see your commitment to the city and your devotion to it. I think that's probably the biggest thing for me, and I've always admired that. And so, I think, you know, it's, it's a loss for the, for the council, and hopefully a gain for the community, because there's a lot more to be done that, off, off council than there is to be done on council, that's for sure. I think we all know that. So, I just wish you all the best, and you're not going anywhere. I'm going to see you around, and I look forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Indeed, thank you, and to your family for serving, Jeff. I think you and I will need to spend time over coffee in the next calendar year. I'll go to, back to Ms. Brenner.
Okay, thank you for giving me a few moments to compose myself with all those comments. Jeff, I, there are so many things for which I want to thank you. I want to thank you for your passion for our community, the fact that you have done what you have done strictly because you love Newport Beach says so much. There's been no personal gain in this at all for you, I know that. I know it's only been because you and I have spent the majority of our lives here, and we love this place, and we only want it to be better. And I could see that, even when you and I disagreed, I always knew that you were coming from a place of fairness and of deliberation, that, that you thought long and hard about every decision that you made, and, and you were fair, and you were open-minded, and you had such great communication skills that I, I actually envy your ability. It must be that schoolteacher in you, because you have such a great ability to synthesize information and to present it in, in such an easy manner. I really appreciate that. And mostly, I want to thank you for the legacy of public service, and for, after saying no to running for City Council since the 1980s, you finally pushed me over the edge. And most of the time, I thank you for that. I, I believe that we both served, and I'm continuing to serve, with the attitude of inspiring others within our community to do it just for the love of our city. And I think that's a legacy that I know you inspired in me, and hopefully you and I can inspire in others, to have other people serve, not because there's any personal gain or profit motive by it, but strictly because this is our community, it's our hometown, and we love it, and we want it to be the best that it can be. And I have to say thank you to Sally, because of all the spouses on the council, Sally is the one that was here almost every single meeting, and I think we all really appreciated seeing you out there, knowing that you were cheering us all on and wanting us to do the best job for our city that we could do. And with that, we have a little gift for Jeff, and if Jeff and Sally could meet me right here in the front, I will pass this over to you.
Thank you, all of you. Thank you, all of you out there for your call-ins, for your, for being here tonight, for the heartfelt comments. I just want to say it's been an absolute honor to serve on City Council. An absolute honor. I have absolutely loved my work, working with you staff, you're just the best people. And I'm sorry it's over, and I will miss you all, and, but thanks for making it such a great experience for me.
But this time, we're going to move back into normal public comment. So, if you have any public comments on non-agenda items, we'll start first in the community room.
My name is Max Johnson. I'm a 26-year resident in Newport Beach. I just want to thank Jeff Herdman for his service to our city over the last four years. You know, this is, I think, a difficult night for many in the city that really care to be engaged and involved in an authentic way. Jeff, you embody the selfless servant that so many of us want to represent us on council, and, you know, in our city, it's rare to have so many of our residents constantly engaged and informed in what's going on, on the city level. And when you get to know council members, you get to know their work ethic, and you get to know where their heart is at. And for someone that, you know, served over 40 years in education, I don't know how many years, I'll just keep it, I think, above 40, but I just want to thank you sincerely from the bottom of my heart, from someone who cares so deeply about the city, from someone who was born and raised here, from someone who, you know, has over 26 years. It's a lot of years, and just you and Joy combined, let's just say it, it makes almost over 100 years in the city here. So, I just want to thank you for your constant engagement and your authentic representation, your incredibly hard work on the airport, tireless efforts to, you know, do the best job that you can representing your constituency. And I just have to say, it's a lot of work, and it's a thankless job. I mean, all of you on council, it's a thankless job, and you know that, and it takes a lot to, to be on council. So, I just have to say a huge thank you, and it's been an honor too to see your growth, I think, as a, as a representative for the city. It's, I think, really unique to see where all of you start and where all of you end. And I don't think that this is the end for you, but it's been a pure joy to know you and to have seen the growth that you have made from the beginning, joining council to the end right now. But again, I don't think this is the end for you, and I really hope to see you and look forward to continue to see you stay engaged and informed on, on this, just with city affairs. I don't think you're going anywhere, we know that, but we love you and we care for you, and a thank you. So, and a thank you to all of you also on council. It's a really difficult job, and it, it really means a lot to us as residents to have representatives who are emotionally intelligent, ethically and morally engaged in civic affairs, and really care about the city. So, for those who have lived here for, you know, 20-plus years, it means something different. So, thank you, Jeff, thank you, for all of your hard work. We love you.
All right, we'll go, next speaker, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. I'm going to change the subject before I have to give another box of Kleenex to Joy. I just have a quick comment about the Planning Commission circulation element last night. Was it last night? I don't know, night before, there's a lot of meetings. It was nice to see several council members attending that meeting. I was disappointed that there were not any Planning Commission members that attended, including the liaison to the circulation committee. That was a disappointment to me. So, I don't know if there's anything that can be done to suggest that that is a, something that should be participated in, but it was, it was interesting, informative. I think it was better than the housing meetings, but I was disappointed that there were no Planning Commission people present. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. All right, do we have any calls? All right. All right, we'll move into public hearings. We're going to open the first public hearing, item number 16, ordinance number 2020-28, Residential Design Standards Amendments to Title 20 and Title 21 of the Newport Beach Municipal Code. I mean, this is a pretty, this has gone through a pretty lengthy process, and I think we've all pretty, pretty well understood what this is. Does anyone need a staff report on this one?
Happy to answer questions.
Sorry? Okay, yeah, got it, okay. All right. All right, seeing none, then we'll go into questions or comments, Ms. Brenner.
Simone, I just wanted you to address Jim Moser's comments about the 30-foot lot. In his comments, he, there was some confusion about, about that. Can you clarify?
Certainly, I'm going to introduce Principal Planner Jaime Maria, who worked on this, and he has a kind of a better understanding of the 30-foot lot, so I'll hand it over to Jaime here.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Members of the Council. Yes, so, the 30-foot lot, that's a standard lot size predominantly throughout the city. How our residential design standards apply, if your lot's 30 feet wide or less, you're allowed greater third-floor area, 20%. If your lot is wider than 30 feet, you're allowed only 15% on that third floor. And then that same width applies to when a side step-back is required. So, currently, a side step-back's required only for lots wider than 30 feet, and that's part of the problem, is since that's the, you know, predominant lot size, we're not getting that upper-level articulation on 30-foot-wide lots. And so, part of this amendment is to apply that two-foot side step-back on 30-foot-wide lots, so it applies to more properties. Mr. Moser's comment suggests that we should also restrict that third-floor area allowance to 15%, so that the two standards apply for 30-foot-wide lots, and not in some cases, you know, I'm sorry. So, the side step-back would apply for 30-foot-wide lots, but not the, they wouldn't be able to take advantage of the increased floor area. But we're concerned with that in that the narrower lots, it's harder to fit all the floor area within the first and second levels, and so, they do need increased flexibility on that third level. So, it's staff's recommendation that we maintain the 20% allowance for 30-foot-wide lots, but we do want to apply the two-foot step-backs, so we do get that upper-level articulation.
And what is it for 25, for a 25-foot lot?
For a 25-foot lot, they would be exempt from the side step-backs, and if it's an R2-zone 25-foot lot, there's no limit on the upper-level area, but our amendments do propose applying a front and rear step-backs to get that articulation.
And Councilmember Brenner, we, we did a lot of outreach with not only just the community, but also the design professionals. We wanted to talk to the architects, like, can you make this work? And so, the feedback we got for those really skinny, narrow lots, it wasn't working, but our proposal was not working, so we had to grant a little bit more flexibility for those skinnier lots, to allow them to build to their kind of full potential.
So, are Balboa Island lots 30 feet, like Corona del Mar?
Yeah, the, the typical lot size in Balboa Island's 30 by 85.
Okay, so it's a little bit less deep, but it's the same width.
Correct.
So, are we going to solve the problem of all the people complaining about that third-story massing by changing it this way?
That's what, that's what we've proposed this evening. We feel that we're able to address the mansionization issue, address the massing issues. At the same time, we've gotten a lot of community support for what we're, what we've proposed. You'll see a lot of public comments this evening, is a lot of support letters, and we've gotten support from the designers and the architects, that they're able to support what we've gone through. It, it's morphed quite a bit since what we originally looked at, but SB 330 really kind of tied our hands in really what we wanted to do. So, I think this is the best we have to address the concerns and not violate SB 330.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Muldoon.
Thank you. So, essentially, this is, we had a, I think we had a study session on this, correct?
We've had a couple, correct.
And because FEMA requirements, the lots are appearing higher, so the first floor is higher than it typically a neighbor would. And if they're going three floors up, the problem was not so much that they're going three floors up, for many, it's that they were going three floors up all the way to the front or back of the building, and it felt like you were in Santa Monica, as opposed to being in a beach town.
That's correct, that's that massing on the third floor.
And you showed some pictures, I think, where basically people were clearly abusing the patios that we had envisioned for them to have. So, this is what this is attempting to do, is to address the patio issue.
Yes.
Not the living space issue.
Correct.
So, what you're proposing here is not a reduction in square feet?
We cannot.
So, it is a complete, it's, you still have the, the remaining ability for the same square feet, which is what housing prices and property values sort of are based on. So, it's, this is more aesthetic, and it really is not so aesthetic in telling people what they can or can't do for design or type architecture. It's aesthetic in that you're saying you can no longer abuse the outdoor patio by making it look like it's a whole nother enclosed extra floor.
That's correct, and we backtested that theory. We talked to the architects and to the designers, and we said, can we still get that maximum floor area off these properties? And the answer came back yes, except for the RM lots, which are the multifamily, and so we had to change it even further to allow them to build to their full potential. As you said, Councilmember Muldoon, this is really just an architectural change, it's not changing any of their floor area or their buildable area.
Well, really, I almost see it as correcting the loophole that people were taking advantage of. It was never the intent that you would enclose the outdoor open space and make it look like essentially another floor, it was the intent that you could enjoy an outdoor open space. So, you're still enjoying the outdoor open space, you're still having the exact same square footage, you're still having a, a, a design that you may find, that you may like as far as style, but we're no longer going to permit you to do a makeshift outdoor patio, not really because it's the worst thing, but because that's not what we had in mind originally. It's, it's the intent, we're withholding the intent essentially.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Ms. Dixon.
Thank you, and Councilmember Muldoon clarified many of the points I wanted to clarify, but again, I will emphasize that we're not changing buildable square footage area or living space. It's really to fix a, a problem that was created and, and with the zoning change in 2010. It's really to fix a problem that was created and with the zoning change in 2010, and it really didn't manifest itself in our community to see these loophole patio areas as well as attic areas on the third floor until buildings started to increase after the 2008 recession. So it really took a few years to manifest itself and that's when the community really became aware that what are these big, big things on top of, on top of the property? And so, I really want to commend staff and Jaime and you, Simone, for engaging with the community, the professional design and building community. We really wanted to be clear, this is not, absolutely not a takeaway of any property or property rights. In fact, on the multifamily, it's just a modest, was it two inches or something in terms of a setback or stuff?
Right, it's that two foot on the multifamily.
Or two foot, two feet.
Correct.
And some of the property owners who were originally very concerned about that have written and said that they are in support now because we've made the modifications, you've made the modifications. So this has been a complex issue and it's been going on now for two years of community engagement and review. I commend you, you, we've addressed part of the problem or the issue related to Balboa Island and the expansion there. And what this is all about is preserving, preserving and protecting property values, preserving the character of our communities and just putting some architectural, allowing and encouraging and specifying architectural detail in the construction of our single-family residences as well as multifamily. And because of the new law under SB 30, local government is limited to what it can do and so we are increasing density on multifamily areas. We're not changing density at all. No density has changed. We wouldn't have been allowed to do that. And incentivizes more density, in fact, in multifamily zones. So I find, I really appreciate the hard work that staff put out for this because it is very complex. Jaime, you did a great job, very complicated. And I think it really will, it will enhance the future development in our city. We could have the extra space on the third floor, but it will be done in such a way that adds to the value of the property and doesn't detract from the neighboring conditions. So thank you very much and I plan to support it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Avery.
Yeah, I can speak for myself, when you spend this much time on something as critical as this and something everyone's paying attention to, to have so many letters of support was wonderful, you know, coming into the meeting. And I think that's a testament to the hard work your department has done and really listening and, you know, really thinking hard about how to mitigate the issue and still deliver, you know, where you had to due to the constraints you're working under. So I think it's a really good result and, you know, I just think, you know, we really were kind of surprised by the changes that happened earlier this century. And it's, change is always gonna happen, but it seems to be more about the rate of change. And so containing that in terms of the look and the feel is so important. That's what everyone's after, is preserving the character of the town. I think everybody, well, most people accept change as inevitable, but I think this is a step forward in sort of acknowledging change, but at the same time, sort of keeping quote-unquote "the rate, the feel of change," tamp down and, you know, making good neighbors, if you will, creating little valleys and things for the breeze and the sun to get through, it's really important. So, yeah, great, I'm happy we're at this juncture. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Brenner.
I'm sorry, I failed to acknowledge that this issue was brought to us almost two years ago by Councilman Herdman, that he was the one that brought this up and listened to the people in the community that were so concerned about it and brought it to us and then our, our staff has just done an amazing job. I own two duplexes in Old Corona Del Mar and so I'm speaking as someone who is impacted by this because they are not built out, but I just want people to know, this is not going to make everyone happy. It's all we can do, we've done, our staff has done a great job of limiting it as much as we possibly can, but this is not going to solve the problem of third stories in our two zones and, you know, it's going to give a little bit more definition and hopefully will not be the huge mass that people are seeing, but it's still, they're still larger than the lots in Corona Del Mar and I believe Balboa Island were intended to be built upon. And it's just, this is just the best that we can do and I want to say thank you to our staff.
Thank you.
All right, I also intend on supporting it, so it sounds like this has the makings of a passage. So let's go out to public comment at this time and we'll start in the community room.
Members of the council, this is Jim Mosher. And first I wanted to say I support this in whatever form you adopt it, but to expand on the question about 30-foot lots and the transition between standards that occurs there, to try to take another stab at clarifying what the issue is there, the staff has made a change. This requirement that the third floor be articulated on the sides by the two feet has always applied to a lot that was 30.1 feet wide. They are now recommending it apply to the many lots that are 30.0 feet wide. That 30.1-foot lot also has a more strict standard for the floor area on the third floor, 15% versus 20%. The staff is leaving the 30-foot-wide lot at the 20% limit and if you're changing the articulation to be stricter, you could at the same time, I believe, without violating anything, be imposing the stricter 15% limit that currently applies to a 30.1 could be applied to a 30-foot-wide limit, a lot. And I believe that the people who are concerned about the overwhelming size of the third floors would appreciate that consistency, although some of the people who have the lots and want to build them to their max probably would not. The other point I wanted to make is, in connection with SB 330, I hope that this is not challenged, but I believe our wish for articulation of the third floors would be more defensible if it was expressed as a design standard rather than a setback. The staff is recommending that the two feet and the 15 and the 20 feet be measured from the setback lines, which makes them themselves to an architect, a new setback requirement that could raise a legal issue. It would better to, and you would achieve the same effect if you simply described it as an architectural feature, that the third floor has to be articulated by a certain number of feet from the wall under it. So that it's a description of what the wall looks like rather than a setback description. It would be easy to change the ordinance to read that way and I think it would be more defensible. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker please. All right, we'll go to the phones. All right, we'll bring it back. I mean, any thoughts on what Mr. Mosher was saying there, or are you pretty comfortable in the defensibility?
Yeah, we're very comfortable, so, you know, I spoke personally with each of these staff and I explained the issues in detail. We also had, you know, our legal division or department take a second look at it and we're confident that there's no issues with SB 330.
All right, thank you. All right, we'll bring it back up. Seeing no requests for discussion, or Ms. Brenner?
I was just gonna say I was ready to make a motion.
Go right ahead.
I'd like to move staff's recommendation.
And I'll second it.
Seconded by Ms. Dixon. Seeing no discussion, let's go ahead and vote.
The motion carries unanimously, 5-0 with council members Duffield and Herdman absent.
All right. Ms. Leong, item 17's been polled?
Yes.
All right, we'll move into item number 18, memorandum of understanding with the City of Costa Mesa toward the funding, development and shared use of its permanent bridge shelter facility. I don't think we need a staff report on this, but Ms. Leong, would you mind just kind of at least giving the high brushstrokes of where we've been and where this helps us get to?
Sure, absolutely. This has certainly been a bit of a long journey, I would say, but I think there had been quite a work over the last, I want to say at least a year and a half, as homelessness has become an issue here as well as in neighboring cities and really across the state. So we had been tasked through the city council to look at a couple different options for homeless shelter and had explored some options in the city, but what eventually became the most viable was partnering with Costa Mesa as they're building a permanent shelter in, within Costa Mesa city limits. And I think as the issue has evolved further and looking at the homeless population, it really made a lot of sense to have regional partnerships and we see that happening in other places along in the county as well. So we've been working very closely, both at the council level and at staff level, to come together on an MOU agreement. Costa Mesa is now underway in constructing on their site at 3175 Airway, on building 70 beds there, so 50 will be for Costa Mesa and 20 for the City of Newport Beach here. They have put in, between the purchase of the parcel and putting in the improvements and enhancements, I think it's, they're estimating about 11 million in that range there. What we will be doing is, if this is agreed upon, would be putting in 1.6 million for capital and furnishings here and then 1 million annually in operating costs for the 20 beds. And I want to emphasize, it's not just bed space, but it's full shelter services with the whole intent of having the homeless who enter into there to be able to move on to the next stages of a housing. So that, it's that service piece of it that's gonna be very key, that they're currently doing now with Mercy House as their operator and that would continue there. So, Costa Mesa City Council unanimously approved it last week at their council meeting, so if it moves forward here, then we would move on to the next steps and they're estimating construction, construction finishing in January with, their intent is to have it operational by March, end of March, so in that spring timeframe, so that's what we're looking at.
All right. Mr. Avery.
Oh, I just wanted to say, Grace, you and your team, really, I know, worked hard on this and what a great outcome and great partnership with City of Costa Mesa. And it was so important for us to get to this point and it's been a long road and I just think it, it worked out well and where we are today compared to where we were when we started this journey, it's a new world. So, thank you so much for just pushing it and, you know, helping us get to this point.
Ms. Dixon.
Thank you. So a lot of thank yous to be said tonight as we embark on this phase of our homeless journey that's been going on with intensity for the last at least three or four longer years, it was a Boise decision, so since then. A couple points is, number one, the City of Newport Beach was never involved in a lawsuit and so we are, have been moving along this path to do the right thing, to do the right thing in a humanitarian manner for the homeless and people in need in our community and whether it's at the Newport Pier, the Balboa Pier, or the Orange County Transit Center, we have homeless and then various other sidewalks. I know in McFadden Place at the Newport Pier, we've had homeless living in our community on our streets and they deserve better. They do not need to be sleeping on our sidewalks and in our streets and they need the proper care, whether it's rehabilitation, drug rehabilitation, mental health treatment, but these people need help. And then joining together with Costa Mesa in a sub-regional solution makes sense from a financial standpoint. Obviously, if we had to do this on our own, as we were considering a couple of locations within our own city and we heard from the residents that that was unacceptable, as well as it would have been multiple times more expensive for the city to bear alone. So we appreciate the City of Costa Mesa allowing us to work with them and they appreciate us for having, making a financial contribution, I'm sure. I also want to take an opportunity to thank Hoag Hospital because our recent development agreement with them in terms of the development of, proposed development of their property near the hospital, the agreement was to fund the community benefit, the public benefit agreement included funds to support homeless-related services. So that's a significant for 1.3 million dollars over 10 years, I think it is.
It's 300,000 a year for 10 years.
Maybe that's what, yeah. And so that's a significant contribution to offset our costs and much-needed rehabilitative and medical treatment. So, very proud of the homeless task force that has been working diligently with members of our community to work on this solution and Grace and working with the city and all the homeless experts in the county and United Way. I mean, there's so many hands in this project, but we as a city can take pride that we're doing the right thing and we will now have a humanitarian, humane solution, humane solution for the homeless that occupy our public spaces and that we can help them hopefully move on to a better life. So, thank you for all your hard work and Mayor, you've certainly led this effort and members of the council have all had a hand, we've all had a hand in the homeless situation and, and we finally are getting to a solution, so thank you. Thank you all.
Ms. Brenner.
I would just like to say, I'm amazed at the progress that we've made in just the two years that I've been involved on the council and how far we came just as a city and as a community in, we evolved from a place of sort of panic to a place of really thoroughly understanding this, authorizing the staff members that have become experts on this, that are, as Diane said, dealing with our homeless population in such a humane manner and that we were able to put our sort of egos aside and, and partner with another city that is also doing a remarkable job and was a little bit ahead of us because of the lawsuit, but that we were able to work with them and they were willing to work with us. And it really shows to me how government should, should behave, that it was not, it was not about anyone really having the glory or the credit, it was about everyone working together to solve a problem and I know our community really appreciates it. And I, and I'll be glad to make a motion to approve all of this when the time comes.
Thank you. Mr. Muldoon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We're here for a couple of reasons. The state's inability to deal with their own problems, whether it's criminal justice or the homeless issue. The federal courts essentially have given us no choice if we wanted to be able to enforce our own laws and protect our citizens and children. We are here basically now because in order for us to enforce our laws, we must have this service provided at the expense of the taxpayers locally, as opposed to being given money from the state. And I hope it's enough beds under what this federal judge has asked for. It's not even the location that I would have chosen, but with all that said, I think a special thanks goes to the mayor who did a fantastic job, gave us a great deal with City of Costa Mesa, not easy people to deal with sometimes when it comes to staff and staff competition. A very special thanks to Hoag who paid for this, or in part helped pay for this and the amazing services they give to our residents. And I'm not totally sold that this is the solution, I'm not even sure that the beds will be used, but having these beds available will allow us to enforce our own laws under the federal order. Thank you.
Thank you. So at our last meeting, we did, we had a homelessness update and I think it's worth noting that this is by far going to be the most expensive part of our, our approach to ending homelessness on our streets in here in Newport Beach, but it is, it is a part of it. And I think one of the things that we learned was that our point-in-time count from two years ago was in the mid 60s, it was 64. And with the rather incredible work being done, led actually locally by Natalie Bespersion, we've seen the numbers in our city go down into the mid 20s of people. we've seen the numbers in our city go down into the mid-'20s of people who are experiencing homelessness on our streets. And that's no easy task when you don't have a shelter inside the city to be able to send someone into to get them up and off the streets, get them a hot meal, a clean shower, and help do intake interviews. And so what we've seen is, our city's embraced a lot of the, you know, it's a very different place than we were two years ago. And two years ago, we actually had to open the windows in the back of this room because there were so many people here to express their frustration at us over this issue. And it says an incredible amount that our community room is nearly empty on an issue like this, given where we've gotten to. So I'd like to just simply say thank you to pretty much everyone, our task force, our council members who went through the task force meetings that were, at times, fairly contentious.
Contentious?
Yeah, that's probably saying it lightly. And with a compassion toward the people who are working through the issues that are bringing them to the streets tonight, I have to say just a little bit, I am concerned that we're going to see an explosion of homelessness beyond what we're already seeing now, given the numbers that we're seeing in terms of the debt load the people are starting to take on, not paying their rent in counties like Los Angeles and here in Orange County, because there's a ban on evictions, and people have simply stopped paying. We've already heard stories of people who are on our streets who saw that debt load getting raised up and decided, you know, someday I'm going to have to pay this, I can't keep accumulating debt, and they walked away. And when we eventually, next year, get to the point where the eviction moratorium is no longer in place, we need a landing spot for some folks, and we need to expect that those numbers are going to increase. And so having this as an ability to help people get up and off, and hopefully get into more permanent supportive housing, or find housing, or at least get into programs where if they need drug rehab, they can get drug rehab, if they need help with mental illness, they can get help with mental illness, if the need is job training or life skills, those as well. And so this option is very expensive, but part of the reason it's very expensive is because it's those services, it's the wraparound services. And so I am glad that we were able to get to this point. It has taken a long time, and I'd just like to say, over in Costa Mesa, thank you very much to City Manager Farrell and Susan Price in particular for getting this back on track and helping us out, and Grace for developing the relationships with both of them to help get us through this. So it's one more step on a fairly long road, but I'm glad we're on it. So with that said, let's go out to public comment at this time. Do we have any public comment?
Mayor O'Neill, members of the council. This again is an item I support, this partnership with the City of Costa Mesa towards building and operating a homeless shelter. But I first wanted to say that earlier this evening, there was some discussion about public engagement and the wish to have more public engagement. And it seems to me that by skipping staff reports after the staff has gone to the trouble of preparing them, causes the few people who are probably watching at home to have some difficulty following what it is that you are discussing and about to approve. So I think it is probably not a great idea to skip staff reports. I did read the staff report myself, and I have two questions about the Hoag funding, which of course we all appreciate. First, as the staff report notes, Hoag is going to be paying $300,000 a year towards the 1 million a year in operating costs that we are committing to with this agreement. That, as Councilmember Dixon said, was part of the development agreement extension that was agreed to last year. And under that development agreement, I believe there is a trust fund somewhere, so the first $200,000, $300,000 have actually already been paid and are presumably in an account somewhere and available for the operating costs. What I was surprised to see is the staff report also mentions another $400,000 contribution from Hoag for homeless shelter services to the Emergency Homeless Shelter CIP, it says. That $400,000 is going towards the 1.6 million that we are committing to for a one-time payment for the construction rather than the operation of the shelter. I do not recall where that $400,000 came from or being accepted by the city council, so I would appreciate if somebody would clarify what the source of that money is. Thank you.
Thank you. Go to the next speaker. Okay, do we have any calls? All right. May I go ahead?
Oh, thank you. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes, thank you. This is Dennis Bress, Balboa Island, and I just wanted to call in to congratulate you guys. This has been a tremendous team effort and a journey, like you had expressed, Mayor O'Neill. It took a partnership with a sister city, and a special thanks goes out to Grace and her team for putting this together. This is, like you said, not only just the 20 beds, but more importantly, it's the wraparound services that will help our less fortunate brothers and sisters to be able to move forward in their lives. So I commend the council, City of Newport Beach, in the partnership with City of Costa Mesa, specifically Mayor Katrina Foley on making this happen, and look forward to you guys moving forward with this partnership. And thank you so much for your continued service, and I'm glad we've got this to a position where we have it tonight. So again, thank you very much. This is about really helping people that are less fortunate, and I want to wish everybody that's listening tonight to have a great and safe Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other calls? All right, let's bring it back. Ms. Brenner, I know you said you'd love to, would you mind giving me this one?
I was just going to say that I appreciate the members of this task force so much, and I was going to offer to have you and Brad do that if you would like to, because we really, I called those meetings "public stonings," and we really suffered through those together, but we got to such an amazing place that I would be more than happy to let you and Brad do that.
I appreciate that. Well, oh, man, this is one of those, it's a long one. Anyway, I appreciate that. I move staff recommendation on this item.
I'll second it.
Thank you. All right, let's go ahead and vote on this.
The motion carries unanimously 5-0.
All right, I went too fast on our last item, so I need to go back and let the clerk read the title of the ordinance.
For item 16, for ordinance number 2020-28, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach, adopting zoning code amendment CA 2019-004 to amend Title 20, planning and zoning of the City of Newport Beach municipal code related to residential design standards. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. All right, on to item number 19. I think we should do a brief staff report on this one.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. I'm Steve Montano, Deputy Finance Director. You have a fairly detailed staff report in your pocket, so I'll go through this rather quickly. Stop me at any time if you have any questions. Just to inform everyone, the Finance Committee looked at this item just last week, they reviewed and discussed it.
Steve, I am sorry, I forgot that we have a handful of conflicts if we were to actually get into the details of projects. As long as we're staying at the general level, we won't need to get into conflicts. So if people stop at project level, I'll need to start collecting conflicts. Go ahead. Thanks, Steve.
So given the circumstances of COVID-19, you know, we note that the economy has improved in recent months, but we are so far beating, and we are so far beating, revenue expectations. But in absolute terms, we are realizing less revenue overall when compared to prior years, and this is largely due to the sharp decline in spending on certain goods and services, especially for Newport Beach and the leisure, travel, and restaurant sectors. Given the circumstances, however, general fund revenue performance for both FY '20 and '21 has been better than expected. General fund revenues overall ended FY '20 10.9 million higher than projected in almost all categories, and this is significant, given that revenues were reduced in FY '20 by 13 million in anticipation of a much more severe downturn. And so far through the first quarter of FY '21, general fund revenues are 3.2 million higher than expected. Here's a summary of our major general fund revenue categories and how they performed at year-end FY '20. I'll just note that the first four categories listed on this chart accounted for almost half the positive revenue variance you see at the bottom there, that 10.8 million. Here's the status of our general fund revenues through quarter one of this current fiscal year, which is also looking pretty good so far. We've looked at other funds as well, funds that are subject to revenue volatility, and we see no need for budget adjustments at this time. We'll continue to monitor these funds on a monthly basis. Moving on to expenditures, they ended the year in FY '20 3.9 million higher, or just to say lower, which is a good thing, than projected. And so far in FY '21, we are 3.4 million lower than projected, so good news there as well. Again, here's a summary of our major general fund expenditure categories and how they performed in FY '20. Same here with FY '21 through quarter one, again, good news to report, everything's looking pretty good. So the point of this next slide is indicate how budget performance translates to fund balance. So you see sources and uses, it's a busy slide, but just let me call your attention to that far-right column there. So with higher revenues and lower expenditures and budgeted, we now have an unrestricted general fund resource or reserve of 12.3 million projected for FY '21. And you'll also see here, you see that red box, that's what I'm talking about, and you'll also see indicated, and I'll talk about this in a few slides, we are proposing to restore the $2.3 million draw from the contingency reserve that was used to balance this year's budget. And so with that, you'll see that we're proposing to restore the contingency reserve back to where it was before we took that draw.
Steve, if I can just, just to make sure it's very clear for everyone, that due to the positive revenues more than what we had estimated, because we had put some reductions in based on what we knew at the time with the, starting with the COVID, so we were pretty severe in some areas where we didn't know, so revenues came in much better. We were able to, we reduced expenditures as budgeted, but then went beyond that and really brought that in. So net, having that 12.2 million, that's more than what we had anticipated we would be in this current year with. So it's, I think, a very good thing, and Steve will elaborate a little bit further, but given the uncertainty that we're going through now, that we're going in with 12.2 million more.
So in other words, we're starting the year with basically a $12.2 million surplus, and the question is how to use that to roll back some of the tiers that we've been working through. All right.
So you may recall that in FY '21, as we were developing the budget, we set aside a $5 million reserve to cover any investment shortfalls that would impact our unfunded actuarial liability. And, you know, as we've been saying, based on our positive budget performance so far, we recommend allocating the 5 million to our operating budget at this time, and this would increase our total UAL, or unfunded actuarial liability, contribution from 35 to 40 million for FY '21. So that's part of our recommendation for the evening.
Hang on just one second there, because this came up at Finance Committee, I want to make sure it's understood. This 5 million was budgeted, it wouldn't roll back out of the 12.2 that we were just talking about. So what we had done in our tier, do you have a slide that has the tiers?
Sure.
Thanks, Steve. There you go, perfect. All right. What we were looking at in these tier system, if you recall, we basically started cuts in 1, 2, 3, you know, in order, and you can see in tier 5, that 2.3 number right down there. We stopped at tier 5, we didn't need to get into tier 6. I will say that I've always believed that there's basically a tier 5 and 1/2, because that tier 5 and 1/2 would have included the $5 million pension that we were just talking about, because I think it would have been a fair policy question whether to send that $5 million toward the pension, toward a pension payout, or, excuse me, ADP, man, I'm sorry, additional discretionary payment, whether we would send in an additional discretionary payment or actually initiate service-level cuts. Fortunately, we never reached that point. We're now actually rolling back because of that surplus. And I caution using the word surplus, it is technically the right word to use, but it's not the same surplus as we've seen in past years where you know that, you know, we can anticipate steady revenue growth and whatnot. That 12.2 came because of drastic cuts, you know, we're seeing in the first four tiers here that would normally never have been cut. And then we also got, you know, we didn't get lucky, but we got, you know, fortunate that more revenue came in than anticipated on year-end, and then as we've gone into quarter one, same, but look, we just got shut down again, not entirely, it's a very different shutdown than we saw in March or April, but with the widespread transmission that you're seeing in LA County, and, you know, the cuts that they're talking about making, and, you know, the changes we're seeing out of the state of California weekly these days, it's worth just remembering that it's not the same, that surplus term is not the same term that we would normally be using in other years, simply because of our fairly conservative strategy here. So I did want to point out, if you could go back to that slide with the pension. So the reason I wanted to point this out is because that was budgeted, it is an anticipated expense, but we set it aside with the idea that we would actually have a discussion at this meeting among council to decide whether to actually fund it, or whether to pull it back into the general fund and use it towards something else. And so that's why it's important to remember the timing of what we've done with this particular money and why it's coming back to council for the decision now. And I agree with this recommendation, but it's important to understand that it's not part of that surplus, it's actually already budgeted, we just need to make the decision on whether to send it in.
Can I just ask a question?
Yeah, Ms. Dixon.
To clarify, thank you, Mayor. This is not our additional payment that we make annually, is it? The 5 million?
It's kind of an additional, additional. So I know that's, so we have a normal cost, which is the amount that we need to pay for our regular employees. We have the unfunded pension obligation default amount, which is what we pay. We, as a city, as you know, we make the additional discretionary payments to pay down existing obligations. This 5 million is in anticipation that PERS will not be making, will not be hitting the investment results that they would otherwise be needing to make, which is that 7% annual. We do not, as a city, as a matter of policy, our city is decided that they're not going to hit that, which we've been right.
Right.
But we're also, because we've made that policy choice, we've said, look, when we have the cash to do so, we'll continue to get out ahead of it the way that we've...
So are we doing it, or are we not?
That's what the recommendation is. This 5 million is that forward-looking additional.
But I guess to transfer the 5 million from the PERS set aside to the operating budget so we could continue to fund it?
Correct.
Okay, got it.
Yes, yeah, we're not, it is not a pullback to put, and then not send to PERS.
I just wanted to emphasize that. As long as I have the microphone, yeah, just a quick question. On the revenue side, I don't think we've ever seen, maybe even ever, a decline in property taxes, but your staff report says that it's really related to the forgiveness of interest and other payments from the state that it mandated under COVID. Is that what that is, about why we have a 14% decline? It's not... It's not because of assessed valuations?
No, in fact, excuse me, that's largely due to our supplemental taxes, which were coming in, the first few payments came in lower than the prior year, but since November has come around, we're actually higher than we were last year. So, you might consider it just a lag in payments.
Okay.
Nothing to be concerned about.
We usually don't see a decline in property tax revenue. Well, I know that there's been, just to be clear for the record, there's no decline in assessed value, because we haven't even seen those evaluations yet for another year, I guess. But in any event, this is just some transfer payments.
It's just point in time, first three months of the year, you know, that, property tax actually lags quite a bit. So, we're seeing some pretty, in November, we've seen some positive income or revenue from property tax, actually.
Okay. Thank you very much.
All right, let's keep going.
Mayor, you already covered tier five, so I'll just go straight to tier four and kind of give you a description of that. So, with tier four, excuse me, focused on transfers in totaling 4.5 million from internal service funds to backfill the general fund revenue shortfall, we propose to return 500,000 to the equipment replacement fund to improve that fund's reserve status. So, that's the second recommendation. You'll see that highlighted in red as part of tier four. The remaining tiers, one through three, relied on deferred capital, temporary hiring freeze, and various operating reductions. We're proposing no restorations at this time, because I know we're by no means out of the woods. We still have the potential of needing to make structural adjustments should COVID get worse, or anything can happen. So, we're just kind of keeping the course, staying steady for the moment. So, to conclude, we will continue to monitor the budget performance in subsequent quarters. We'll be reporting that back out to you in, you know, in the coming months, and we'll be making adjustments as needed. We also propose a budget amendment to restore the items mentioned in the previous slides, and as summarized here again, be happy to answer any questions.
An idea of how short CalPERS is going to wind up?
Just because, we just gave a PERS presentation at the Finance Committee, so it's fresh in my mind. So, we do know, and as you recall, the challenging thing with PERS is the numbers come, and then it's two years later when we actually see the effect, just the way that they work their numbers through. But we do know in this 1920 fiscal year that just ended, so June 30th of 2020, they came in at 4.7% investment return, where they're, obviously their assumed rate is 7%. So, there's that differential.
What would that mean dollar-wise?
So, for us, for that one time hit, we calculated about 16 million more on our unfunded liability, which is why this is very critical, this additional 5 million.
Right.
Is we're starting to pay it now, because actually when it goes into effect, most agencies aren't going to have to start paying against it. The contribution rate doesn't change for actually two and a half years down the line. But we're already starting now by putting these additional payments in.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Muldoon.
Thank you. So, if that trend continues by the time that two and a half year mark hits, we might take care of that issue.
We won't take care of all of it, but we, but we will take care of a sizable piece of it. And plus, to the extent you have an unfunded liability, they kind of charge you 7% against that too, right? So, we're reducing from that end too. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, they charge you for the two years that you're not paying because they haven't invoiced you for it yet. Yeah. All right, we'll go out to a public comment on this at this time. Do we have any public comment from the community room? Quiet community room. All right, do we have any calls? All right, let's bring it back. So, I think on this, it's just, it's a good reminder that, yes, we're doing well through Q1. I'm concerned about Q2. Yet again, you know, we talked during study session about how important it is to shop local for our environment, and it is so important this year that we shop local for our economy, for our local economy, for our local businesses. Just remember, you know, every time you're spending money in a local shop, the sales tax stays here. And when the sales tax stays here, that goes to fund all of the amenities that come to, come to bear on, you know, the quality of life we have in Newport Beach. So, not only are you helping local shop owners, but you're also making sure the quality of life here in Newport Beach is important. So, with that, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion that we approve staff recommendation. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Dixon. Seeing no discussion, let's go ahead and take a vote. Great. On item number 20, we spent a significant amount of time on this during study session. I'm going to remind everyone of what my recommendation is going to be coming out of that study session discussion, which is if you look at the, if you look at the staff recommendation, we have an option of B1, B2, or B3. And my recommendation is going to be B1, but with the caveat that we bring back the issue of a contract with CRNR or RFP by the second meeting in January. So, I'm just going to remind everyone that that was, that's going to be my recommendation coming out of our study session. So, anyway...
Is that a motion?
It's not. No, it's not. But it's, but I just wanted to prep everyone. Did anyone have any questions or comments on this item before we go to public comment?
Yeah, just one quick one.
Yep, Mr. Muldoon.
Thank you. Mr. Harp, is this, this extension still within the original time period, contemplating when we entered the first RFP with them?
Yeah, so the contract provides that we can extend it in this manner.
So, it's not a quote, "No big contract"?
That's right.
Okay, thank you.
Right. All right, seeing no further, we'll go to public comment. Do we have any public comment in the community room first? All right, do we have any calls? All right, let's bring it back. All right, since I'm asking for a little bit more of a nuance, I'm understanding I'm going to make the motion here. I move staff recommendation A, and then B1 with the caveat that we bring back at the second meeting in January, either a, either terms of with, with CRNR for a new set of contracts, or, I'm sorry, a contract to subsume other contracts, or that we go out to RFP at that time.
I second.
Second by Ms. Dixon. Any discussion? All right, let's go ahead and vote.
Motion carries unanimously, 5-0.
All right, at this time, we'll go to item number 21, the coronavirus update.
I have a quick update, and we'll also have Chief Boyle speaking a little bit too here. We know the tier system, painfully so, I think, right now. And I think one of the main things we're really looking at, this shows you on a statewide basis, cases, some of the other stats from the beginning of October until about now. And you can see the, those deep increases in the very recent weeks. And that's essentially, we're dealing with this, which many people are calling the third surge here. And this is very much what the governor is looking at in his actions. On our county level, you can also see that we are also trending upward. We had a pretty good run of some steady rates, but you can see the, particularly these last two weeks, that case per 100,000 really moved us into that purple tier, starting last week, and that number is continuing to grow. And that's pretty challenging. And that positivity rate, which actually was pretty good, you can see a few weeks back and actually had us in a much lower tier, has now pulled up considerably. Interestingly, the health equity metric, which looks at the lowest quartile for the county, has actually held somewhat steady for right now. I feel that's an interesting thing to, to see what happens with that as the weeks continue. So, looking at that, I will note though, in Newport Beach, our numbers have been, you know, going up here, you can see the daily cases just got pulled off, I think, today of the 13, but it has been somewhat steady. It's noted here, the last death was 41 days ago. That's a really good thing here for our city, so something to just keep in mind too, as we look at the numbers. But in reaction to, to the, to the significant increases going on, the state started moving a little quickly. We actually thought the original way to move between the tiers, particularly to move into a worst tier, was they did the seven-day look back and a seven-day, you know, you'd have to be in that worst tier for two weeks worth. So, we actually thought we were going to be in the purple tier starting this week. But last Monday, the governor pulled back and said, now we're doing a four-day look back and placing, so we got, Orange County got placed into purple last week, which the primary thing for, for us here was that it reduced the retail capacity, so instead of like 50% occupancy, it went down to 25. Closing indoor dining, that's a big hit, of course, for our restaurants and fitness centers indoors being closed and places of worship. The other thing that the governor put into effect at the end of the week was this, essentially like a curfew for between 10:00 p.m. to 5:00 a.m. as well. That's in effect right now through, through most of December here. For our side, we are watching this very carefully, but we, we are essential service in terms of providing government operations. So, our city hall remains open at this time, but we're, are certainly monitoring the numbers carefully. Our library remains open. It's allowed open at the 25% capacity, so we're maintaining that. We did have to close our Oasis Fitness Center because fitness centers needed, could only be open outdoors, so that didn't work for our Oasis Center there. I will also note, we continue to have our emergency temporary use permit program. That's the program we put together to enable the outdoor dining, and that continues. And we continue to work hard in, in any permits that come in to process them very quickly. Currently, we do see things of, that are more like amendments to existing permits, like sometimes looking at changing the hours and that sort of thing. So, we do work to process those as rapidly as we can, as well as continue to monitor that businesses are meeting the conditions of those permits. I think this, it's already been well-publicized on this, the chamber canceling the Christmas Boat Parade. And then the other thing I want to bring Chief Boyle up to talk a bit about is, now that we are looking into the next phases, there's been some promising results of vaccines. So, really, the next big effort in this fighting COVID is how vaccines will be distributed and implemented. And we think there will be an active role that our fire department can play in that. So, I'm going to bring Chief Boyle up to speak a little bit to that, and maybe also to the temporary use permit as well.
Thank you, Ms. Leung. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Jeff Boyle, Fire Chief. I would like to take a quick minute to remind everyone with the recent closures of the restaurants, moving everybody, everybody outdoor with the temperatures dropping, we're going, obviously start seeing some portable gas-fired heaters. So, we've been trying to make an effort to, from the city side of things, I know it's in the Stu News and the Fire Marshals are, are making a push around the county, to just remind business owners, restaurant owners, that portable gas-fired heaters can only be used outside. They can't be inside of the tented areas or any other type of membrane. They need to be within five, they can't be within five feet of a building, five feet of any combustibles, and five feet of exits. And I know that probably sounds like common sense, but it's always worth noting because fires do start. We're going to see an unprecedented amount of people outside in those type of tents and parking lots. So, we really just want to make sure that people are safe about how they're doing that. Going back to the COVID front, the county medical director, as, let me back up, as we've seen the positive news coming out from the, the different pharmaceutical companies with the efficacy rates of the vaccines, it looks like they're on the horizon. So, we're seeing on the news that perhaps 20 million doses or so could come out before the end of the year, and they'll hit first responders and healthcare workers first. And then there's a tiered system of how they'll be distributed. But when you start thinking in terms of the millions of doses that need to be distributed amongst the rest of the population around the country, it's a pretty heavy lift. That's not like your normal flu vaccination or anything that we've really even seen for that matter in this country. So, our Orange County Medical Director applied for authorization from the state and then through county public health to add local paramedics to that list of people that can distribute the vaccinations. So, people will have options. They can go to CVS, Walgreens, those types of pharmaceutical places, their local doctors, Hoag Hospital, UCI. But I anticipate the appointments and the lines will probably be pretty staggering. And if there are segments of the population that don't want to do that, we're hoping to offer those services here in-house in the city with our own paramedic. So, I don't know how that looks exactly yet, but perhaps we do some clinics at Oasis or here in the community center, and people could come here, and we will have the vaccinations seemingly available to us to distribute as well. So, we're really excited about that. I think the push will, to be getting it out as soon as December, January, February in the coming months, that's the only way we're really going to get our arms around this from the herd immunity standpoint, and we're hoping to be part of the solution. And that's, that's the end of my report.
That's great. I can tell everyone, just real quickly, on council, I'd reached out to Robert Brithwaite over at Hoag to make sure that we were coordinating as a city with Hoag on this exact issue. So, Grace and Chief Boyle and I are going to make sure we coordinate probably in the coming weeks with Robert to, to make sure that we're on the same page with Hoag as we move forward on this. It's just fantastic. That's really, that is really good news, Chief.
I do want to say from the paramedic protocol standpoint that that's completely unprecedented, and as I use the word staggering, because I'm still trying to wrap my head around it, but our partnership with Hoag, the county public health, the medical director, it's, it will just be an all-hands-on-deck. So, I need to give them a lot of credit. The county fire chiefs got behind it, and the state authorized the local county medical directors to make the decision on their own. And obviously, Orange County is all in. We pushed in for that. So, it's exciting, very exciting.
Yeah, we're going to work really hard to make sure we're taking care of our residents and, you know, on this issue in particular, to make sure there, you know, we have ready access when, when the time comes. Real quick, Ms. Brenner.
I just thought you were going to mention the letter we got from Hoag telling people to please get their flu vaccine.
Oh, no, but you go ahead, because you're right.
Well, we did get a letter from Hoag, and, and in it, Robert really encouraged everyone to get their flu vaccination, because it would be a double whammy to get the flu and then COVID, or COVID and the flu, it would weaken the immunity. So, it's really important that we all get our flu vaccination.
Yeah. Chief, that's, that's great. I appreciate that. You don't need to keep standing up here. I want to highlight just a few things to follow up on Grace's point about where we're seeing numbers right now. We're, Newport, look, we're never going to be an island, so just take what I'm about to say with a grain of salt, but Newport has seen a, over the last 30 days, you know, a lower case rate number than what your, what our population would otherwise indicate we would be expecting inside the county. So, over the last 30 days, Newport's seen, and this is just tracking off the Orange County website, but we've seen an increase of about 200 cases. And you can compare that up to some of the other cities around us. You've got Costa Mesa at 445, Huntington at 539, Irvine at 599. And then the outliers admittedly in our, in our county right now are Anaheim, who over the last 30 days has seen an increase of 2,167 cases, and Santa Ana at 2,444 cases. And so, if you add up all of the case numbers over the last 30 days and just say, okay, what percentage of that has Newport Beach represented? We're are, sorry, we're at about 1.5% of it. Our population is about 2.7% of the county. So, we're, we haven't seen the same level of increases a lot of the, the community, but that doesn't mean we can't see that. So, I just want to caution folks, you know, continue to get tested. There are plenty of locations inside Newport Beach. I actually got my first test last week. Wasn't super pleasant, but, yeah, it was the nose. But, you know, it was, but it was, if, they are offering over at the Newport Center Urgent Care, same-day PCR, you do have to pay extra for it, but they, they've got same-day, and then they also have rapid tests. And, you know, there are a lot of opportunities to get tested in our community. If you're looking for a free option that'll test both the, for COVID and for the flu, you can go get a reservation through the Orange County website, Orange County Health website over at the Fairgrounds. The Fairgrounds is a super site, along with Anaheim over at, gosh, Honda Center, Honda, I think it's at the Honda Center. Well, anyway, you can find it. But we've got a couple of supersites. at the Honda Center. Well, anyway, you can find it. But we've got a couple of super sites through the county. And then the county is also starting to roll out a test-at-home where you can spit into a vial and send it back. So I imagine that won't be quite as fast. But the, the point is that there is a lot of opportunity for testing if you feel it. But I'll just point out, you know, this tier system that the governor has created, if, if that's what we're gonna continue to work off of on openings and closings, Grace showed a slide showing the numbers substantially increasing. I mean, I'll tell you, folks, there are, there, if you look at the zip code maps that came out today, there are multiple zip codes in some of the cities that are hard-hit, showing case rates above 40. And so the idea that we're gonna be rolling back in pretty quickly, it's not gonna happen. And so I just point this out because our businesses are going to be under this purple tier for the foreseeable future, perhaps even through the rest of the year. And so now is the time to make sure that they, if you love a restaurant, or if you love a shop, and you want to see it around in six months from now, you need to go patronize it now and in the next weeks. Like, I'm just begging people, please stop buying off Amazon. Like, just, you know, if you're gonna order something for takeout, go pick it up and try not to use DoorDash or Uber Eats. They, they do take a pretty substantial cut from the restaurant themselves. So, you know, all these restaurants we've been going to for a long time, and, you know, and asking them for donations to our favorite charity and to our, to our, you know, sports leagues and whatnot, you know, now's the time to pay them back. So we gotta rally around, we gotta support local, and we gotta really help out our business community because they're gonna be hurting if we don't. And be safe. That's exactly right. Be well. Follow Hoag's advice. Hoag's fantastic. I mean, they've gotten us through so much. I'm just saying, is that, is that moment. Anyway, with that, any other comments up here? All right, we'll go out to public comment. Do we have any public comment on this item?
Good evening, Mayor O'Neill and council members. I'm Steve Rosansky, President and CEO of the Newport Beach Chamber of Commerce. I thought I would come down and address the council with regard to the Boat Parade, which was mentioned earlier by Grace in her summary. As many of you know, we issued last week a notice that we would be canceling the Boat Parade for the 2020 season. And I just wanted to comment on that. As all of you know, the Chamber of Commerce has served as the home and host and organizer of the Boat Parade for more decades than, you know, I can count. We, you know, we bill it as this year would have been the 112th Christmas Boat Parade, and it's had different iterations over the years from its start, you know, from one boat going around the harbor with Mr. Scarp on it and a lantern, to, you know, what we saw last year, 90-plus registered boats and hundreds of other boats out in the harbor enjoying the holiday season. And so as we headed into this year with, you know, obviously coronavirus in the background the whole time, you know, we said we're gonna continue with the planning and the scheduling of the event, the organizing of the event, and, but always with the thought that we would reassess as we got closer and saw what, you know, what conditions were. And we started planning for the event back in March and April, and obviously, March and April, we were in lockdown. And so it was quite optimistic at that point that we would even have a parade. Seemed to, things seemed to get better and then worse during the summer, and then they seemed to get better again. So we were hopeful that we could stage the parade in a safe manner for both the residents and the boaters and the visitors to the community. However, you know, as has just been pointed out with the figures that were presented, you know, things have changed rapidly over the last couple of weeks. And so starting last week, I was approached by various members in the community, and I sought out the advice of members in the community, including, you know, Gary Sherwin with the Newport Beach Visitor Bureau. I spoke with you, Mayor O'Neill. I spoke with Grace and several other council members, discussed it with actually even former council members and mayors of the city of Newport Beach who, you know, have a lot of experience that I, you know, wanted to take advantage of, other members of our board, the Chamber Board of Directors. And, you know, we came to the conclusion that it was not acceptable to, to continue to move forward with an event, a five-day event, that literally brings hundreds of thousands of people into our community. You know, you were talking just a minute ago about how low the rates are here in Newport Beach, but much higher in other communities. Well, that's where these people come from. They come from all over the county. They come from LA County, Riverside, and San Bernardino County, which are seeing way higher rates than even we are. Actually, if you go to the Blueprint for a Safer Economy data that was put out today, our coronavirus, you know, cases per 100,000 and our positivity rate here in Orange County are now higher than LA County, which really shocked me. I couldn't believe that considering, you know, LA County has really been a hotspot. So the numbers are rising. We were seeing triple the number of cases per 100,000 today from what we did two weeks ago. If I could have another couple minutes here?
Yeah, go ahead.
Appreciate it.
Yes, sorry.
Thank you. So, you know, the numbers are rising. We made the decision that it was not in the best interest of our residents on Balboa Island, in Balboa Village, Marina Park, all the public docks and other areas where the public tends to congregate during the Boat Parade, and that there was just no way to control these types of crowds, considering, you know, the, the length and breadth of the city that we're talking about. And, you know, they do tend to crowd up, they bunch up. There's no way to really socially distance adequately. There's no way to ensure that people are gonna wear masks. And, you know, we, we just didn't feel was responsible to have, you know, five consecutive nights of basically super-spreader-type events. And we're talking about an event that's really not gonna happen for another three weeks. Three weeks from today, after we pass through Thanksgiving, I can imagine that we're gonna see significantly higher numbers than we are today. You know, we, we've already, since we announced the end of the parade, the governor's announced a curfew from 10:00 PM to 5:00 AM. Dana Point has actually canceled their Boat Parade. We've, I, I can't remember if it was before or after, but the Restaurant Association has canceled Restaurant Week in January. We, you had a presentation earlier about, from Joy Brenner, Councilwoman Brenner, regarding Christmas Walk, and that they didn't feel that they could have a one-day event that would have brought lots of people down to Corona del Mar and the crowding on the streets. Well, we're talking about a five-day event that has even more crowding than, than Christmas Walk. And so ultimately, we decided it just wasn't our best interest. We, we've canceled the event. We're no longer hosting that event. And so, and part of the reason why I'm here tonight is I'm just a little concerned because in response, we've seen, I've seen at least two other groups that are now advertising a Boat Parade. And so, you know, despite all the indications and despite all the reservations that we have, which, you know, I guess they can try and do that, I know that we do a significant amount of pre-planning for this event, especially with regard to safety on the water. So not only am I concerned about the issue of what this means for our residents and visitors here from a crowding standpoint, I'm actually getting a little concerned now what this means from a safety-on-the-water standpoint. Because, you know, when we run the parade, we run a number of on-the-water Parade Marshals. We work closely with the Harbor Patrol, with the Sheriff's Patrol, with the Coast Guard Auxiliary. We, you know, engage Sea tow to help us clear the boats out of the way. And even with all of that planning, I'll tell you, last year, we had, you know, our lead boat hung up on a mooring line. We had another boat that ran aground on Sandbar. I had reports of other boats, you know, not in the parade officially, but boats, spectator boats that-
Steve, if you could wrap it up.
-crashed into each other. So clearly, it's, it's, you know, it's, it's a dangerous situation on the water at night. I would be concerned about that certainly, and I would hope that the city would be concerned about that, and that they would look into and advise these groups that are planning these things that they need, you know, there's a lot more than just showing up on the water and running a bunch of boats around the harbor. So thank you for the extra time. If you have any questions, you know where to find me. And-
Thank you. All right, thank you. Are there any other public comments in the community room? Do you have any public comments by phone? All right, we'll bring it back up. Mr. Muldoon.
Thank you. Yeah, I, thank you, Steve, for that. I understand the chamber had its reasons. The overwhelming support for the push to keep the Boat Parade going, to me, has been unbelievable. So many people appreciate this parade. Obviously, it was started by a couple of families over 100 years ago. And I spoke to one member of one of those families who's very happy to see it go through. It doesn't always have to be as large and as orchestrated. Smaller is fine, and Newport Beach and Company, other entities, don't have to advertise if they don't want to. So we don't have to worry about the crowds being as large. But at the end of the day, if you're concerned about this, you have the ability to stay home or take precautions. I believe that this is a moment for us to exercise our freedom and what is for many the most joyous time of the year, and what has been for a lot, a lot of other folks, the toughest year they've ever faced. So that's why it's, it's so important to me. The boaters on the harbor are gonna be just fine, experienced boaters who've been doing a lot in the water for a lot of years. Doesn't necessarily require the same organizational setup if it's gonna be smaller, but if it is gonna be large, I think people know how to, to navigate this harbor pretty well. So at the end of the day, it is my hope that those who do go do, do it safely and respectfully. It'll be on the restaurants and other operators to ensure their own protocols on their locations. It'll be, most importantly, on individuals to enjoy a celebration that we have experienced for over 100 years. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Avery.
Yeah, I agree with Councilmember Muldoon, and I also commend Steve. He did the right thing because he represents a large organization in Chamber of Commerce, and he did what he had to do. But I do believe there will be boats out there, and I just hope everybody's safe and people are careful. But this is a time for people to really be careful about their decisions and what they're gonna do, what they're comfortable with, because there will be crowds regardless, and not as big as if we were actually holding the parade. But, you know, the harbor's always been one of those places. We, we've managed to get through this without, unlike San Diego, without denying people the ability to get on the water and enjoy their boats as people enjoy the beach. These are important things. But people just have to behave responsibly. And sometimes we see on the harbor, they don't, but that's something that we really can't control unless they're, you know, threatening other people. So, but I think for the most part, people will be respectful and will get through it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Seeing no others, we'll go into next item, motion for reconsideration. Madam Clerk.
A motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the city council. Either this meeting or the previous meeting may be made only by one of the council members who voted with the prevailing side.
All right, seeing no such motions, I will wish everyone a very happy Thanksgiving, and we are adjourned.